Sisters Zahra, Assalamualaikum. I think we should start.
Yes, Insha Allah. I'll just share the screen. So you should see my screen now?
Yes.
It is sharing now. I think yes, we can see now.
Perfect. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Wa assalaatu wa assalam ala nabiina Muhammad wa ala alihi wa sahbihi. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. On behalf of IOF Secretariat, it gives me a great pleasure to welcome you to IOF's public hearing which we are holding in collaboration with the Iraqi Union of Accountants and Auditors. In this public hearing, we will touch upon two of the auditing and assurance exposure drafts, namely the SO double A one, the framework of auditing, and the SO double A four, which is the auditing requirements for assessing compliance with Sharia principles and rules. So if you allow me, I'll take just few minutes to go through the agenda of the session. The first ten or fifteen minutes will be allocated for the welcoming remarks, then we will start the discussion on the two exposure drafts and we will conclude Insha Allah by eleven thirty AM Bahrain time. So it's one and a half hour as the public hearing. Now, if you allow me, I would like to invite Dr. Saad Al Minahi, who is the member of the Board of Director in the Iraqi Union of Accountants and Auditors, and also the dean of the Arabic Institute for Certified Public Accountants, to deliver his welcoming remarks, Dr. Saad.
Yes, thank you so much. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Wa assalaatu wa assalam ala Sayyidul Mursaliin, Nabiina Muhammad, wa ala alihi, tayyibin, ahtharin, wa ashabi, lghur, almentjabin. Ladies and gentlemen, good morning. First of all, allow me to convey the greeting of the syndicator of accountants and auditing in Iraq, Dr. Juad Ghani Shiheli, also the president of the General Union of Accountants and Auditors. I am Dr. Saad Al Ma'ini, Assistant Professor of Baghdad University, and I am a member of the Union of Iraqi Union of Accounting and Auditors. I am also dean of Arabic Institute of Certified Public Accountants, the private organization, the Arabic, and we have three branch in Sudan and Tunis and Iraq. We hope extend our branch in other countries, Arabic countries specifically. I am honored to attend this important session, which is attended by the distinguished professor from the all around the world. The session discussed two important auditor standards. The first related to the framework of auditors, which is represents in our view the audit constitutions. بالعربية نسمي الدستور يعني مثلا هذا الدستور المحاسة المدقيقين. It represented a roadmap for the work of any auditors also. In particular with regards the acceptance, the audit engagement, and the scope of the audit and the ethical requirement, as well as important other important aspects. The second standard is related to the auditor requirement of the assessment compliance with Sharia principle and rules is synonyms with ISA in international auditing standards, two hundred and fifty. However, it's more difficult because it's deal with rules and the principles that are open to multi-negotiations. Okay, finally, I wish that these meeting all present in this meeting success and this meeting will come up with important recommendation and amendment to the two standards we are discussed it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Saad, for your remarks, and we are very pleased that you have accepted our invite. We highly appreciate this partnership and collaboration with the Iraqi Union of Accountants and Auditors. And Insha Allah, this session marks the beginning of a solid partnership between IOF and the Iraqi Union of Accountants.
Insha Allah, thank you so much.
You're welcome. So for my welcoming remark, I will just touch upon two points very briefly, the development process for these two exposure draft, as well as the approach for managing this session. These two exposure drafts are the outcome of the IOF project for the revision and update of auditing and assurance standards. So in two thousand and nineteen, Egypt, which is IOF governance ethics board, approved the initiation of this revision project. And Alhamdulillah, in two thousand and twenty-two, specifically in December, we managed to issue the SO double A one, which is the framework of auditing. And then we were able to hold two public hearings to discuss the exposure draft. As for the SO double A four, which is the auditing requirements for assessing compliance with Sharia principles and rules, this exposure draft was issued last year in December two thousand and twenty-four. Last month, we were able to hold the first public hearing in fifteenth of April. So Insha Allah, we will hold additional public hearings to discuss the exposure draft. This is what happened previously, already happened. What about what we are going to do next? We will complete the public consultation process. We will compile all the comments and present them to the relevant committee and board. As for this public hearing, Alhamdulillah, we are very pleased to start the session and the objective is to learn from your experience and get your feedback. And therefore, we welcome your comments in the Q and A tab, and Insha Allah, if there is time, we can allow for verbal participation as well. If we finish this session and you still have more comments, please feel free to share with us on governance@IOF.com. This is it from my side. Now, I would like to invite the Secretary General of IOF, Brother Ahmed Mustafa Ansari, to start the discussion.
Thank you very much, Sisters Zahra, and thank you very much, Dr. Saad, for being with us and for the Iraqi Association of Accountants and Auditors for this collaboration and support. Looking forward to meet you in person, Insha Allah, shortly as well. أَحْضُبِ اللَّهِ مِنَ الشَّتَانِ رَجِيمٍ بِسْمِ اللَّهِ وَرَحْمَٰنِ وَرَحِيمٍ رَبِّ شَرَحٍ لِّسَدْرِي وَيَسْلِيْلِيْمْرِي أَهْلُ لَقْطَتَمِ الْلِّسَانِ يَفْقَهُ قَالِي Ladies and gentlemen, Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh, and good morning, good afternoon, good evening, depending on the parts of the world from where you are joining in. It's a great pleasure to be here with you again, and this is one of the public hearings on the auditing side, which has a unique set of like, you know, the stakeholders, not exactly the same like our Sharia standards or governance and auditing and governance and accounting standards. But so at times, like, you know, you feel that you are lacking some comments, and that is the reason that our series of public hearings is continuing, and we are looking forward to have more and more valuable value-adding comments, Insha Allah. I can still see some of very good, very, very well-known names in Islamic finance and the relevant industry and profession who are joining in. Thanks to all of you. Particular thanks to those who are joining in from the countries where Sunday is a public holiday. Normally, we try to keep public hearings in days which are not public holiday in any part of the world. But at times, it is, you know, it becomes necessary to manage time that we have to audit these days. So effectively, we know that a large number of countries from where people normally join in, and even today, I can see some of them joining in for whom it is a weekend. So particular thanks to those who are like, you know, you know, in slang words, you say ruining their weekend, or I would say they who are investing their weekends weekend in like this very important subject. We highly appreciate all of you providing comments, being present here. Without further ado, I would like to like take you through the discussion. So what will be our approach today? As Sister Zahra has already mentioned that we issued SO double A one earlier, and then SO double A four was issued later. So actually, we held a couple of public, I think at least one or two public hearings on SO double A one alone as well. And even in last public hearing, which was the combined one, we felt that a lot of time was taken in discussion on SO double A one, while SO double A four was not discussed in detail. Although both are interlinked standards, and it is not possible to understand the requirements of SO double A four without actually understanding the requirements of SO double A one. But since this is not, this is, I think, fourth public hearing if we see in the whole series, and there will be one more in Arabic at least, and maybe one more in English, we'll see if there is need. So from that perspective, today, what I will do is that the SO double A one requirements, I'll take you through the sections, I'll provide you brief about that one, and then we will move to SO double A four, and we will be discussing that one in detail, Insha Allah. Paragraph by paragraph, and maximum detail will be covered, Insha Allah. But any comment on SO double A one would be more than welcome, Insha Allah. Now, before going to opening up my, again, presentation, a lot of people ask about presentations, so the presentation is exactly the same as the standard. Standard is available on PDF version on our website, so you can always have access to that. This presentation normally is not shared. However, before going to presentation, I think it's important that I discuss the fundamental difference between AOF's auditing standards and the ISAs, as well as what is the need for having these standards. So let's go back to the starting point of AOF. Accounting and auditing is not for, Organization for Islamic Financial Institutions was formed by a way of agreement in nineteen ninety-one in Algiers, and it started in nineteen ninety-two, its operations in Bahrain. Since then, it is based in Bahrain. The main initiators, the main founding members of AOF were the Islamic Financial Institutions, large ones at that time. Some, actually, all of them except for one are still one of the largest, some of the largest Islamic financial institutions around the globe. Now, the situation is, at that point, the situation was that considering the uniqueness of Islamic finance, considering the unique aspects of Islamic finance, need was being felt to understand and to identify that unique accounting requirements and accounting principles, as well as the auditing requirement and auditing principles for Islamic finance. Now, how to put it? There is an argument that a lot of time I use it, and I say that Islamic finance is different. It is different from conventional point, conventional, conventional finance. And that is the key point or key, like, you know, key reason for existence of AOF. That when you have a, when you have a financial system which is different from the prevalent conventional financial system, then you need to find out appropriate set of principles for that financial system, and that is primarily the basis for AOF. And as the name suggests, we started with accounting and auditing standards, but then we expanded into the areas of Sharia governance and Sharia governance and ethics standard. Just to clarify one part, while Sharia standards, separate Sharia standards were developed at a later stage, initially, still the Sharia principles were documented in proper form within the accounting standards and within appendices of the accounting standard. So from day one, AOF had been working for everything in line with Sharia principles and rules. Now, the question is, why auditing for Islamic finance would be different from auditing for any other institution? What would be the difference? For that question, first, we need to go for the accounting side. Why accounting would be different? So when we talk about the Islamic finance accounting, we say that Islamic finance accounting is different from conventional accounting in two aspects. One aspect is where there is a very specific Sharia rule or Sharia principle that need to be addressed while doing the accounting part. For example, timing of recognition of revenue, for example, rights. My apologies, I don't know, my system was disconnected for a while, so I need to just go back to where I was, just to confirm, Sister Zahra and others, if you can confirm that you can hear me?
Yes, brother, we can hear you.
Okay. So we were talking about where the business model is different from the conventional finance, and that is the time where we need to do different accounting. But when we do this different accounting according to the Sharia principles and rules and according to the business model, we need to go one step back, and we need to see why it is needed. Because there is a, there is a friend actually who says, I need type of transaction I can capture into the conventional accounting standards. He was referring to IFRS in particular, and maybe, yes, that is correct, that IFRS might be good enough to account for any type of transaction. But why then this business model and Sharia principle issue comes in? So we need to go back to one further step. That is one further step going back. And that step is, I would say, accounting is, what is the main purpose of accounting? What is the objective of accounting? Accounting, objective of accounting is to provide financial information to the users of financial statement, to the relevant stakeholders in a way that they can take informed decisions. Now, there is a specific set of users of financial statements and stakeholders that we define as Sharia-conscious users of financial statements or stakeholders. These people have their own concerns. Because, for example, let me put my example, there is Islamic bank here where the expected return is two percent, and there is a conventional bank whose fixed interest rate is three percent. Being a Sharia-conscious investor, I'll go to the Islamic bank even if the return is less. And yes, there will be lot of people who will prefer Sharia compliance if the rate is similar or more or less the same. So the Sharia-conscious stakeholders, the Sharia-conscious investors, their information need becomes different. And fundamentally, first, they need to make sure that, number one, Sharia principles and rules are followed, so accordingly, what they earn is halal. So accounting should be able to provide the financial reporting to ensure and give confidence to the investors who are Sharia-conscious stakeholders or Sharia-conscious investors that their income or their transactions with the institution and the way these are reported and reported, this is all in line with Sharia principles and rules, and what they earn is halal. Part one. Part two, business model. Now, what happens that the stakeholders of Islamic financial institutions have a different type of transaction risk or investment risk, or their balances are subject to different risk profile as compared to conventional? So for example, I invested money with Islamic bank, and I invested money with conventional bank. When I invest with the conventional bank, for example, at three percent per annum, I'm concerned about the creditworthiness of the bank and stability to pay me back my principal along with interest. But when I invested in the Islamic bank, Islamic bank says, okay, I'll take your money and I will invest it in a pool of assets. Those assets will be having Sharia compliant returns. Based on those Sharia compliant returns, this is the formula according to which a profit will be calculated. And based on that, I will give you this much return. This is expected. And based on that, I will give you this much return, this is expected, I will give you this proportion of return. Which is expected to be equal to this percentage. Now, it means that as compared to a conventional institution, my risk factor with Islamic institution is different and I need to. Be aware about not only the creditworthiness of the bank, but I need to be aware about, for example. What are the underlying assets, are, whether they are halal or not, because that is one of my conditions. And secondly, whether the underlying assets are generating the returns as expected and the asset management quality, stewardship, everything is appropriate. To ensure that I get the right amount of returns which is expected to be there. And this is where the second aspect, that is the business model aspect of Islamic finance. Identify which requires separate and like, you know, or additional, I won't say separate, but additional. And at times distinct accounting principles. Now, this is the accounting part, now come to the auditing part. Wow, what is the purpose of audit? What we are trying to do in audit? We try to do confidence, uh, provide confidence on the fair reporting in the financial statements. We are talking right now, just to clarify one thing. This whole discussion is about the financial statement audit, today's whole discussion, we are not talking about Sharia audit on which we have separate standards. We have standard number eleven on the internal Sharia audit, governing standard number eleven on internal Sharia audit and SO is six. Or which was earlier called A S five six on external Sharia audit. So we are not going to discuss right now external and internal Sharia audit, what we are talking about is. External audit or financial statement audit. So now audit, auditor is supposed to provide confidence to the stakeholders about fair. And true truthful reporting in the financial statements. So let's say, let's go back to what we discussed on the accounting side, so if the accounting. Of financial statements of Islamic financial institutions and other Islamic finance structures, et cetera, they are. They are adjusted as compared to the conventional standards to provide the basis and the, 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 the relevant information to the. In it, to the Sharia conscious investors and stakeholders. Here, we need to provide them confidence on that part and that is where since day one, A O P's, A O P's. External auditing standards have been making a requ- have been, have, have already have this requirement, have been. Making it a mandatory requirement that auditor should report. On the Sharia compliance of the institution as well. And as it is related to the preparation of financial statements and the financial activities during the period. So what is the difference in accounting and, uh, in the auditing reports or the auditing scope as per A O P and as per I S A's? There is primarily one scope difference that is A O P auditing standards primarily require. That Sharia compliance aspects need to be reported. This requirement is already there since beginning of A O P, since the first standard on of, on auditing objectives of auditing was issued. Uh, by A O P nearly twenty five years back. So since that time, we have this requirement, now what we are trying to do? Are we going to change it? No, the core principle we are not going to change. Only what we are going to do in these standards, SO double A one and SO double A four. Number one, earlier we had five standards, now we are trying to reduce the number to two standards. Number two, earlier if they were aligned with I S A's, we are aligning with the updated version of I S A's and we are trying to make sure. That the requirements of I S A's are better incorporated in our standards. These two standards are the core standards, after that we may issue some additional guidance notes, et cetera, but with that. How we create the, the, the compendium, the compendium is. A O P's, these two standards, earlier there were five standards, these two will replace the earlier two standards. Uh, sorry, these two will replace earlier five standards. It's SO double A one will replace SO double, uh, earlier auditing standard number one, two, three and five. And the standard number four will pro- replace the standard number four. And this will make the new set of A O P auditing standards and then what we'll have? These standards read with I S A's together, uh, like you know, making the A O P's auditing framework. I S A's, we didn't refer to I S A's in particular, we refer to establishes, establishes, uh. Uh, practices of auditing, uh, they're like, uh, like as, as, uh, primarily I S A's are part of it, but in different countries, there can be. Local regu- local regulations or local auditing standards as well, so we kept it, uh, the option a bit open that you can work with A O P standards. And the local standards as well, but primarily you are supposed to work with the international standards on auditing. So this is the whole background, in a nutshell. Auditing standard, these two auditing standard will replace the earlier five auditing standards, these address the financial statement audit. For Islamic financial institutions and other institutions that operate in line with Sharia principles and rules. Standard number one, SO double A one provides overall foundations and principles of auditing for ninety percent aligned with I S A's. Only different, the main difference is that we have to address the aspect of Sharia compliance primarily, which is part of our report as well. Partially, it is going to address the, the business model issue as well. The standard number four is about the unique aspects of audit which are related to compliance with Sharia principles and rules. Uh, the minimum procedures or things that need to be carried out, so it complements the standard number one. And this is like, you know, the summary of what we are going to have as A O P's on upcoming auditing framework. In principle, I can assure that the core principles established by A O P are going to continue, but these are well. Uh, these are better defined, better explained, better aligned with I S A's. And addresses some of the industry concerns that we received over the period of time. So now with your permission, I'll share my screen, but, uh, and then I'll provide you a brief about. Uh, first, the auditing standards, uh, or SO double A one. Sorry. As I already mentioned, SO double A one is a very long standard, so I'm going to discuss the key principles only and the contents and we'll take comments. The, the discussion is open for comments. Uh, anybody who has comments, questions, please feel free to put them in Q and A tab. Uh, with that, just to confirm that, uh, the screen is moving and past, like, you know, more recently, we have seen that. At times, uh, this, uh, there is some compatibility issue between Zoom and PowerPoint shows. Sister Zahra, Sister Alia, somebody can confirm that, uh, screen is moving?
Yes, brother, it's moving.
Okay, thank you very much. Now, about SO double A one, I'll just take you through the key differences that, uh, let me just take you through first the rationale and then the key, key differences. A O P SO double A's, SO A was the initial term, but recently we decided to have it SO double A, SO double A is standard on auditing and assurance. It's SO A was supposed to be on auditing part only. But considering that we have standards on Sharia, external Sharia audit and we may need to come up with additional standards. Including review in future, so that's why we decided to name them as SO double A. So the version of SO, SO A one was issued, uh, before this decision of the A O P governance and ethics board, so. So going forward, we ju- we will be changing it before we finalize the standard. So what are the key, key issue, uh, key considerations or rationale for issuing the standard? A O P S O A's, including this one, are developed in line with revised A O P auditing standard setting strategy, considering the aspects that need to be considered by the auditors of financial statements. For the institutions and entities that are in line and comply with Sharia principles and rules, these are. So it means Islamic financial institutions, BAF and other social finance institutions, Sukuk and other, uh, like, uh, is, is Islamic finance structures. Uh, so these are all to be covered, uh, like, you know, by, by these auditing standards as needed. These aspects entirely include the information needs of Sharia conscious stakeholders with regard to as to whether the transactions conducted by the institution. Are Sharia compliant, this is based on the premise that such users of financial statements are not merely interested in profit. Rather, they are equally concerned whether Sharia principles and rules have been complied while earning such profit. And the business model and transaction structures in case of various Islamic financial institutions, structures as well as other Sharia compliant institutions. For example, social finance institutions, which at most times are different from the conventional institution, they are hence are subject to specific financial reporting requirements. Uh, then, uh, about the key differences, uh, for those who have joined in from the audit firms and the profession. For them, the key differences, uh, the standard combines the requirement of multiple earlier standards, including S F five, one, two, two, three and five. In with this standard while reducing redundancies and overlapping with other established practices of auditing. Uh, the, the A O P framework for auditing has been defined, including aspects of compliance, opinion of auditor has been bifurcated for better clarity of scope. Earlier, the Sharia compliance opinion and fair and truth, uh, opinion were both part of one of, uh, of one para- opinion paragraph. Now, these have been segregated, uh, earlier we used the term primary opinion and supplementary opinion, but after some later discussion, we may. Have this thing as pr- as truth and fairness opinion and Sharia compliance opinion. Uh, again, this is one of the areas where your comments will be highly appreciated. Now, quality management requirements at firm level and engagement level have been inserted, which were not there earlier, these are aligned with I S A's and relevant I S Q M, et cetera. Uh, the definition and significant principles have been aligned with established practice of auditing, including coverage of certain aspects which were not covered in earlier standards, including aspects related to reporting, communication, related parties. Compliance with laws and regulations, key audit matters, et cetera, and process flows and key principles of auditing related to various execution phases. Uh, of an audit have been included. Now, objective of the standard is to provide a comprehensive framework for auditor for performance of an audit financial statement of the institution or of. An institution or entity that reports in line and complies with Sharia principles and rules. Do we have any questions, any comments till now? I can't see anything in the Q and A tab, so please feel free to provide your comments. Uh, on the scope part, um, uh, like this applies mainly to or, to the Islamic financial institution, but. Our, this may apply to any other entity also that reports in line with and complies with Sharia principles and rules. The framework of auditing will include all A O P S O double A's and, uh, with, read with relevant pronouncements because. Or like we have guidance note on audit report, et cetera, which will be updated as well. Uh, there will be a new guidance note coming shortly, uh, in place of the existing guidance note on the audit report. And the established practices of auditing, as I mentioned, established practices of auditing are also defined, which are mainly I S A's or otherwise local standards that are. Applicable in the respective countries, so with these two standards, you need to link other standards and this completes the whole process. So I'm not going to discuss the definitions, again, comments are, uh, most welcome on the definition section. I will be, as I mentioned, for SO double A one, I will just be mentioning. About the key contents of each of the section and then we will be moving ahead. Uh, then there is overall aim, objective and scope of, scope of the audit, this, since it is very important, let me just read out this part. The aim of an audit of financial statement is to enhance the degree of confidence of intended users. Including in part, particularly the Sharia conscious stakeholders, uh, Sister Zahra, here plural S for stakeholders.
Yes, it should be changed.
In the financial statements, this is achieved by the expression of opinion by the auditor as to whether or not, or to what extent the financial statements are prepared in all material respects. In accordance with, uh, uh, in accordance with an applicable financial reporting framework that, that is A O P financial reporting framework. Uh, as well as the opinion on the state of compliance of the respective institution with Sharia principles and rules. The overall objective of the auditor are to obtain reasonable assurance about this to enable it to express its opinion, I'm not going into detail to this part. Uh, which include reasonable assurance, which include reasonable assurance about that truth and fairness part. Because that is part one of the opinion and also reasonable assurance about Sharia compliance part, which is part two. Of the opinion, second part of the opinion or the second opinion. So then, uh, compliance requirements, uh, we have put in that all the, all the requirements of A O P framework should be complied with and the code of ethics for. And now we say that A O P's code of ethics for Islamic finance professionals plus I S B A code, both will be applicable on audit of financial statements. Then we have this section on the quality management requirements, we have not gone into detail, but we have aligned the requirements with the requirements of I S A's and the I S Q M. Uh, initiation and pre commencement, uh, this is from now onward, we are talking about the conduct of an audit. So in the, in this section of the conduct of audit, there are subsections which take the process flow of the audit. So in the initiation and pre commencement phase, what are the requirements in line with, again, these are aligned with I S A's. Uh, the acceptance of the engagement part, acceptance of the client and engagement should be in line with the requirements, so equality assurance should be there at the initial stage. Agreeing the terms of audit engagement, earlier we had a separate standard in, an engagement letter for engagement letter, but now. We have this section and further details are left to I S A's. Uh, then we, uh, so, so the minimum requirements are here, particularly the required, because if you want to. Give opinion on Sharia compliance, it means that the whole process of, uh, audit, including, uh, from, starting from the engagement letter. That has to be including the requirements for the Sharia compliance part on which you have to eventually report. So this, these are the main differences that are from I S A's, other than that. The requirements are aligned with I S A's and detailed requirements are left to I S A's. Then we have this, uh, in this audit, audit planning section, planning and risk assessment section, in which the planning requirements are more or less aligned with I S A's. As I mentioned, in most of the sections, the key difference will be only Sharia compliance part and in some of the areas. There will be some key aspects which are related to business model that need to be covered. So the audit planning, uh, planning a risk assessment, uh, planning or audit planning competence part. There is one important aspect that if you are auditing an Islamic financial institution and you have to give opinion on the Sharia compliance part as well. The competence of the audit team ha- has to be reassessed considering. The knowledge and understanding of the applicable financial reporting framework, so for example, if you are in Bahrain and you have to report on. An audit of Islamic financial institution, here you have to be, uh, in, you have, you have to ensure that your team has the relevant skills. On the financial reporting framework side as well as on the Sharia principles and rules side. Identifying, so this is the risk assessment part and particularly we are talking here about the risk assessment part aspect related to Sharia principles and rules. This is, you, like, you know, the unique aspect, as I mentioned, other aspects are in line with I S A's, but these are the unique aspects which are covered in this section. Uh, obviously, I'm not going in all detail, then we are talking about audit materiality, audit materiality aspects are more or less similar with I, I S A's with regard to the quantitative materiality. But when it comes to the qualitative materiality part, even I S A's talk about the qualitative materiality part with regard to the relevant information and the same concept applies here. That for the Sharia compliance part, the qualitative considerations of materiality become important, more and more important. So this section actually touches upon these additional aspects that need to be covered for the audit materiality part. As I mentioned, I'm not going to discuss today in detail, but, uh, some comments we have already received in an earlier public hearings and I'm not sure how much. Comments we received in writing, but we request all of you to provide the requirements. Then we are talking about the planning part related to involving auditors expert, the requirement, general requirements related to involvement of our auditors expert will be remain applicable in line with. Established practices of auditing, that is mainly I S A's. But with regard to the second opinion that you are providing with regard to Sharia principles and rules, there is the issue of. Uh, having the right set of expert here as well, so initially at the, at the acceptance stage, we talked about. Uh, at the initial stage acceptance, we thought, talked about the, the suitability of the team and here we are talking about involvement of the expert that is needed. So there are two aspects, one is the team need to have the relevant info, relevant knowledge. So it is not enough that you just say that, okay, my team doesn't know anything about Islamic finance, but I just involved an expert. That might not be enough, your team also need to be understanding the applicable finance reporting framework, that is the A O P financial accounting standards as well as. The, the, under, it should be able to understand the, the, the Sharia principles and rules and their applicability because that opinion is there. But with regard to particularly the Sharia principles and rules, there might be a need of additional, uh, involvement of expert and that is what you need to perform an assessment here. Like you involve experts on I T side, on derivatives, on, uh, on actuarial valuations, et cetera, similarly, you might. Similarly, you might need to involve expert on the Sharia compliance side. Then, then there is an aspect of reliance on the, of, on the work performed by the Sharia supervisory board. So if you are, uh, if you are like, you know, auditing a financial, financial statement of Islamic financial institution, there must be a Sharia board there. That Sharia board must be issuing an annual report and after, you can rely on that report to a significant aspect. But this is a two-way thing because they also might need to rely on your report. This issue is partially discussed in more detail here. And partially discussed in S O double A four. Uh, in nutshell, you can place reliance on their work. Particularly with regard to the design part of the transaction. But the execution part of the transaction, the implementation part of the Sharia principles, that is something that the auditor has to take into consideration. But yes, still for that execution part, the auditor can make use of the work of the, of the, uh, of the internal, uh, internal Sharia audit. As well as the actual Sharia audit and, and to some extent of the, uh, compliance function, Sharia compliance function within the institution. So there, it's, so but, but, but it's still to the, to a the extent of design part of the transaction. That is the transaction structure that Sharia compliant, the transaction documentation is Sharia compliant, the key process pros. Uh, those are approved by the Sharia, Sharia board. So putting all these things in like, you know, in, like, you know, and, 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 and the assessment part. Of the design of the Sharia compliance controls, the, and then it comes to the execution part. Where obviously the auditor need to perform some work and it may rely on some of the work again, that those aspects are more detailed aspect. Uh, some partially at this, this is standard and in more detail, those are at the address in S double A four. So we have, we have about external Sharia auditor here as well and particularly if the external Sharia auditor is the same firm or is a different firm. Obviously, the reliance level may be different depending on the information that is available. If you, if the same firm is performing the external Sharia audit. Then you may have access to the working papers as well. So reliance can be more. But if it is, uh, if that work is performed by another firm. Then in that situation, the reliance level, uh, may be on the report only and you may not have access to the, to the working papers. Then we have the analytical procedures as part of the prep planning and risk assessment, the preliminary analytical procedures. Again, these are aligned generally with the I S As, using the work of internal audit, using the work of internal Sharia audit. These are the aspects that are covered in this section. Uh, then we have, uh, then we move to the execution part. So this was the planning and risk assessment part. Initially, it was the initiation and the acceptance part, then planning and risk assessment part. Now we come to the execution part. In the execution part, the audit sampling is needed and again, we have touched upon that, you, you all will understand that. Materiality considerations also have a significant consideration for the audit sampling. So that part need to be covered. Then we move to, uh, we move to the, again, appropriate details are provided here with regard to the sampling part. Considering the linkage with the qualitative aspects of, of, uh, of materiality. These need to be like, you know, amended as compared to the conventional. Then we have assessment of control environment, test of controls. These are the normal audit requirements. The main difference at some places will be with regard to the controls related to Sharia compliance to be assessed as well. Then we have the substantive procedures or tests of details, as we say, uh, then supervision of audit work as a requirement. Then we have responsibility for prevention of fraud and error. Earlier, we had a separate standard number five on fraud and error part. So we have, uh, now, now covered it as a section here. More details are left to I S As. But the summary section here is covering the principal requirements with regard to the auditor's responsibility for consideration of fraud and error. Here we have more or less, uh, here we have more or less, uh, like you know, the same requirements except for the Sharia part. Because the fraud and error risk with regard to Sharia compliance is already also there, which is not generally covered on the I S A side. So this is, uh, covered here. Then we talk about inherent limitations of audit and the identification and assessment of risk for potential misstatements, etcetera. This is all related to the fraud and error section. Then we move to other significant considerations. In the other significant considerations that going concern, uh, again, we have touched upon the principle here. And we have left the, the core principles on the I I S A side, more details on the I S A side. Audit materiality, we have touched upon here again with regard to the qualitative aspects of audit materiality. So these are the significant considerations that are related to audit of an I F I that are considered important for us. Uh, this written representations, uh, again, representations have to consider some of the issues related to Sharia compliance. And the business model, uh, which, without which auditor may not be able to give an opinion. Today, I think, uh, there are, there is no question till now. This may be a record-breaking thing. Because most of the time, we are, we have so many questions that it is difficult to complete the presentation. And today, I think either majority wants me to complete my presentation or everybody's sleeping, maybe, uh. Uh, I don't know, uh, whether, what should I conclude, whether people are giving me time or people are like, you know, sleeping actually. Uh. Let's move ahead, uh, and hope that people will start putting some comments and questions. I can see some very senior names in the participants list. So I hope that they would, they would like, you know, come up with some good comments and value addition, Insha Allah. Okay, so, um, uh, related parties again, but that, that, sorry, yes, Madja.
So we, we have a question, um, but it's in the chat tab. So I'll request the participants to put the questions in the Q and A tab. But the question is why only financial statements?
Why only financial statements? It is issue by Dr. Shaf, Shaf, Shafu.
Yes.
Uh, okay, uh, why only financial statements? Uh, now, brother Shafu, I think you, if you can kindly put the question in Q and A tab with regard to, like, you know, which comment you have talked about. Why only financial statements? Because for me, my apologies, maybe, uh, like, you know, it's not very much clear to me. That, uh, that in what context you are talking about this, why only financial statements part? So I request if you can put in the Q and A tab, for those who cannot see Q and A tab directly on the, on the, on the screen. At times they have to put on the more, uh, more and then they will find Q and A tab. It depends on how Zoom shows you. Okay, now the key. Okay, we have comment. Okay, brother Abdul Jalil Opahemi, why is the standard focusing only on financial statements? Brother Abdul Jalil and brother Shafu answer, quick answer is because we are talking about audit of financial statements here. So we are talking about that the audit firms who perform the audit of financial statements of Islamic financial institutions. And other institutions that operate in line with Sharia principles and rules, they must consider these auditing principles. It is not a standard on Sharia audit. Okay, so the opinion on the truth and fairness is only on the financial statements. But the opinion on Sharia compliance is not only on the financial statement. That is on the overall affairs of the institutions during the period. So the, the, the standard is not focusing only on financial statements. It is primarily focusing on financial statements. But not only on financial statements. That is my submission, sir. Then we have requirements related to related parties, compliance with laws and regulations, contingent liabilities and commitments and other requirements which are normally there. Then we have a section on documentation and archiving requirements. Then we have section on conclusion of audit. And which include the review of audit work and engagement, quality control review, etcetera, communication with those charged with governance. Those charging governance is the common term that is used by I S As and O P for referring to the board of directors. And its respective committees, including audit committee, etcetera. Then we have, uh, then we have communication with Sharia supervisory board, which is unique to Islamic finance structures. Uh, and Islamic finance institutions, going concern, assessment update, review of subsequent events, etcetera. So this, here we complete the section, the main section related to conduct of audit. So it was the whole process flow of audit. And the requirements of the whole process flow of audit were contained in this section. Now coming to the reporting part. Now, here we are saying that auditor's report should contain these principal requirements. Uh, old standard used to have a report format. In this standard, we are not putting a report format. Later, we issued, uh, like, you know, after the, uh, several years back. We issued a guidance note on the auditor's report format, because even the standard had an illustrative report format. So then we issued a guidance note. Now that guidance note will be updated in line with the requirements which are here. So in the auditor's report, reporting section, we have these requirements that there has to be a primary opinion. Maybe we will name it as truth and fairness opinion. Uh, probably that will be the final name. But there is something on which we can have your comments as well, that shall we call it primary opinion and supplementary opinion. Or shall, or, or shall we call it truth and fairness opinion and Sharia compliance opinion? So the primary opinion is on the financial statement. So that is answering the question raised by brother Shafu and brother Jalil. That the primary, that the standard's primary opinion aspects are focusing only on financial statements. But the, but the supplementary opinion part is not focusing only on the financial statements. So the primary opinion has to be included here, then supplementary opinion on the Sharia compliance part has to be included here. We have improved the wording of the supplementary opinion as well. One important aspect is that earlier, the standard was referring to Sharia rules. And principles determined by the Sharia board only. Now, at A O P, we have a more clear definition of Sharia principles and rules. Which comprise of a hierarchy, starting with A O P Sharia standards, then country Sharia regulations, then rulings of the central Sharia board. Then, uh, Sharia-related requirements of A O P financial accounting standards and then the rulings of the respective institution Sharia board. So earlier, all the power of defining Sharia principles and rules as per A O P standards and auditing standards, long time back when we started this whole process. Was in the hand of the, uh, in the hand of the Sharia supervisory board of the institution. But now, since it is, it is a more structured thing, so it will be depending on this whole hierarchy. Which means that Sharia supervisory board as per A O P standards and in according to the countries particularly where our standard Sharia standards are adopted. The, the Sharia board's right of defining what is Sharia principle and rule is subordinate to the Sharia standards. And other like, you know, pronouncements as I referred to in, uh, in the definition of Sharia principles and rules. So then we have this supplementary opinion, then elements of the audit report will include title, add a C, auditor's opinion on both parts, basis of opinion, going concern. Key audit matters were not there earlier in our standard. Now, these are requirement of I S As. So we have put key audit letters as requirement. There was a guidance note by A O P on the key audit matters as well and that aspect is also covered. So the, the, the main difference would be that key audit matters for, uh, for the, for the audit of Islamic financial institutions. Will, will report on the key audit matters related to the financial statement, but not related to the, to the Sharia's compliance part. Because, uh, we, we believe that this is mainly needed because of the maturity of the market not enough. And people may misunderstand if the key audit matters related to Sharia are mentioned in the auditor's report. So somebody asked me why you are not putting it a requirement? Is it fairness or not? I said that key audit matters were added in audit report nearly after one hundred fifty years. So, so in the normal audit report for the financial statement, so let's wait at least a few years before we can add. We can see that the market has reached that level of maturity that key audit matters can be included. Otherwise, if you recall, the audit report used to be only couple of paragraphs. Then they be, then they expanded, including responsibility and all that. Now they are further expanded by having the key audit matters. But from that perspective, is still we believe that, uh, the market for Islamic finance is not mature enough. That we can put key audit matters related to Sharia part as a requirement to be published in the auditor's report. Then we have the audit responsibility part and then reporting on the legal regulatory environment requirements and engagement partner signing of the auditor, etcetera. Other common requirement. Then there is an explanation about all these in the remaining section. Uh, I'm not going for all this detail, but these are, these paragraphs that are provided are basis for the upcoming, uh, upcoming, uh. Expected guidance note that we will be showing on the illustrative format of audit report. Now, uh, the, the effective date was originally one January twenty twenty five, periods beginning on or after. Uh, it, I think that, uh, when we issued last time, I say, uh, S A four. Uh, we even at that time realized that it will take some time. So this is one thing, I think S A four has one January twenty twenty six. The periods beginning on or after one January twenty twenty six, I believe, if I am not mistaken, we'll go to S A four, then we will check. But we'll have to align the both the dates. I can see another comment in the Q and A tab, Anissa Noor Fat, uh, Fitriya, Assalamualaikum, Sister. Uh, my company type is a public serving agency under ministry and one of our roles is shooting and managing public fund for Sharia services. Mandatory for us to follow A O P standard. Is there any punishment if our Sharia services do not report to follow A O P's guidance? Uh, Sister, uh, Sister Nissa, I think, uh, I, I think these sort of, uh, these sort of entities. May, are not required by, uh, to follow A O P standards unless the relevant ministry or the relevant regulatory authority adopts A O P standard. Indonesia at this point of time doesn't adopt A O P Sharia standards. Uh, we are in talks with some of the reg- uh, regulatory authorities as well as K N K S and others and some of the accounting bodies as well. Working towards adoption of our standards. Sharia accounting standards are issued separately, uh, by the, by the accounting standard board. The Indonesian Accounting Standard Board, uh, those standards are aligned with A O P requirements. So to that extent, I think that, that the accounting part of that, uh, if I'm not mistaken, because these are all issued. Uh, depending on the adoption by the respective ministry and the regulator, they may be applicable. But at this point of time, uh, there is, there is no mandatory requirement on you, I believe. Uh, and obviously, there is no punishment from our side at all. We are just a standard-setting body. Uh, regulators obviously have the right to implement the standards and, and some situations for non-compliances, they can put some requirements. But as far as I'm aware, uh, Indonesia regulators haven't adopted A O P's standard. So this doesn't apply in your case. But the Sharia accounting standards or that part might still be relevant for you. Thank you very much, uh, for, for your presence here. And thanks for your kind comment. So here I would stop my discussion on this standard number, uh, S O double A one. Pro exposure draft of S O double A one.
But now we have three questions in the, uh, chat.
Chat, chat, okay, I'll take those questions, although we always request these to be put in Q and A tab, but I'll take them. So first, uh, let, let me just take Sister Anissa has again put a comment that I'm still looking for guidance for Sharia services fund under, under state budget. For banking services, all is clear, but the agency and the ministry is still biased. Uh, Sister Nissa, I think it will be good if we can hold a short meeting with you separately. Understanding the nature of your institution and providing you guidance within the available A O P standards. Uh, because, uh, we believe that the way our standards, accounting and Sharia standards are there, they address most of the needs. Of any of the institution that is, uh, working in line with Sharia principles and rules. So from that perspective, I think we can still work on that, uh, may, may, if, if you can, uh, you and anybody can take a note of, uh. Uh, note of my email address for approaching me, please note it down, oansari@ofe.com. Uh, Sister Alia, Sister Madjaan, if you can put, uh, this one, my email address on the, on the, on the chat window as well. So anybody who want to connect, they can connect. Uh, with regard to, uh, with regard to the, uh, to the, to the further, to further details. Obviously, we need to hold a meeting and understand these things properly. Uh, with regard to any other comments that anybody amongst you need to, want to provide. They can provide their comments, uh, on governance at A O P dot com. Uh, I think sisters, if you can just provide that one also, you might have already provided on the, on the chat window already. But just if it is not provided, please provide it again for the comments. We have comment from brother Mohammed Shweb Chima, Assalamualaikum and welcome brother. Up to what extent implementable for the coffee industry in the current scenario? Uh, brother Shweb, I, as, as far as A O P is concerned, we believe that this is fully applicable on the coffee. Takaful uh as being one of the Islamic financial institutions. So the stakeholders of Takaful. Also need the same information and obviously the Sharia compliance need to be ensured. So from our perspective. Takaful is part of the definition of Islamic financial institutions and from that perspective, it is subject to requirement of this standard. Thank you very much for being with us. Uh as sister Marjan has suggested, I'll go to the chat window now and take your and take the comments.
But we have an extension of Dr. Shafi's comment.
Okay, okay. Just now we got one comment here. Item thirty four, why not changing it to outsourcing of expertise? Uh okay, just let me just try to, you are talking about section. You're talk, I think you are talking about. Thirty four is, I think you are talking about use of expert or. Yeah, in in involvement of auditors expert. Uh brother brother Shafi, at the 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 audit process is done in a way that auditor need to involve an expert. Now that expert can be part of the audit firm or in some situations it is allowed to appoint a third person. Uh by the international standards on auditing to be like you know appointed as auditor's expert for something. So for example. There is a fair valuation issue. So there is a fair valuation by. Uh by the uh by the uh there is a fair valuation uh by by the valuer who is appointed by the management. So auditor may need to appoint a fair valuer. Who will be working independently and assessing independently for the auditor. So this is a function that if you if you may have those valuers within your team. Then you can use them or otherwise you can outsource this function. This same thing applies to actuary. And I T experts etc. as well. So personally, I believe that here appointing somebody on contract or upon uh or outsourcing this function to an independent expert. Is permissible. I think it's a good comment. So Marjan, if you can just take a note of this part that auditor expert can be outsourced as well in line with what are the general requirements in I S A's. I think we have not put a prohibition on that and it is well understood that auditor that auditor's expert in any of the area. Can be part of their team or they they can be outsourced or contracted. Uh uh as for the specific purpose. So I think yes, answer, my answer is yes. Only question is. That standard number, this is standard or standard number four, one of the standard need to clarify this part. Thank you very much, Dr. Shafi. I think the comment was, uh comment is well taken. Many many thanks for the comment. I think it is. Uh it is a very good valuable comment and yes, the answer as I can give you is yes. Only thing is if it is not written properly, we'll try to write it down properly. Okay, so then we go to other comments. Uh Dr. Shafi again has a comment, the scope of the standard is very scanty. Dr. Shafi, uh we respect your comment. And but we would request you to provide more detail. With regard to what exactly here you mean by scanty and how. Uh how we can improve that. So if you can make a more clear suggestion that what are the wordings or the. What expression in the scope that you feel is scanty and what you feel can be improved here. Uh Professor Abdul Salam has a comment that our C E O is another meeting and we send our comments through the email provided. Thank you very much, brother. Professor, Dr. Professor Abdul Salam for being with us. We'll highly appreciate if we receive your comments in writing as well. Uh Dr. Shafi mentioned now, later mentioned, sorry, that there is a need to outline the areas to be covered. Uh brother Shafi, I think uh it it uh if you are talking about areas to be covered. Uh I think uh we 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 might need to reconsider your comment, but but generally speaking. Audit is a quite detailed thing. So maybe we may not be able to write down whole the audit process in the scope. So but still we'll take your comment, we'll see how we can improve the wording of the of the scope. We'll see and we will evaluate, but we may not be able to list down all the areas. There is a there is a list of fifty standards of I S A's that are covering different areas of auditing. And we we might not need to, we might not need to repeat all the areas or all the functions which are covered. Uh or whatever we have covered even in this standard might be quite detailed from that perspective. So maybe. Uh it's more about on what type of institution, who applies it and on what type of institution applied. Rather than covering more detail. It's not a Sharia standard, it's a auditing standard and it's a. Core standard on the auditing principles and auditing objectives which covers the. Uh like the framework of auditing, the whole framework of auditing is covered. So when we say framework of auditing. Uh as the as as the overall like you know that standard representing. Overall framework of auditing in that situation, it won't be like you know. Easy to define the scope in terms of what it covers. Rather, it would be more appropriate to mention to whom does it apply and how does it apply. But again, your comment I think is well respected. We'll take it to the working group and the committee and we'll see how it works. The professional auditing standard committee will review each and every comment that is received. Uh and obviously, we'll we'll receive, we'll we'll love to receive your comments in writing, Insha Allah as well. Uh we have come in from sister uh sister Nigat has a request to make a comment in audio. Yes, sister Nigat, thank you very much for being with us and we can allow you, sister sister Alia, sister Zahra. If we can promote sister Nigat for. Sister Nigat Tadwi from Central Bank of Pakistan to join in uh as a like you know uh like allow her to speak. You can allow her to either promote her to panelist or allow her directly to use the mic. Uh in the meanwhile, let me take two more comments. Uh Dr. Dr. Halal Malih has a comment, why were Islamic windows excluded from the scope of the standard given that the standard fast forty has nothing to do with auditing? Uh I think uh I think you it it need to be read properly. So let me just clarify. We did not exclude, we did not exclude windows. So let me just clarify. Window is in the definition of Islamic financial institution. So let me just share this screen again, just a second to explain it properly. Because it is a it is a misunderstanding. So let's just first go to what it covers. So it covers apply to an auditor respect of audit of financial statements of an institution and entity. Now, we apply to an institution and Islamic finance institutions. Uh like you know and we clearly said that it is primarily applicable on Islamic financial institutions here. Marjan, I think we we need to clarify this part. Now let's go to the definition of Islamic financial institution. So if you can see here, doctor. That Islamic financial institutions are financial institution that operate in line with Sharia principles and rules, performing banking, insurance, Takaful capital market and similar activities. And exclude the standalone branches, divisions and windows of conventional institution. So from our perspective, Islamic finance window is an Islamic financial institution. Since it is an Islamic financial institution, it is in the scope of this standard. So. Okay, I think I think Marjan, here we since we have mentioned I F Is. I think we may need to clarify it further that here we can create a cross-reference to the definition of I F Is here. See paragraph this, okay?
Right, okay.
Okay, but but this is clear that it applies to I F Is. Now, what is the exclusion? Exclusion is a transaction or a structure offered by conventional institution referred in clause A and B of part. Paragraph three of F F F F F F F F F Forty. Now that one is that without creating a window. Doing Islamic finance transactions is not a window for us. Window is where you segregate the accounts and you follow the full set of accounting. And F F Forty requires that Windows financial statement should be prepared properly. And as per our understanding, as per our conclusions that we have here. A window need to have financial statements prepared. And those financial statements need to be audited as per this one. Marjan, I think this point need to be clarified very well in the basis of conclusion. So that there is no confusion remaining on that part. The thing that I'm explaining here. Need to be like you know what what I'm doing, I'm trying to read from two, three different places to reach a conclusion. We need to write a basis of conclusion which clarifies this part. So windows are part of this one. We expect windows to prepare financial statements under F F Forty and be audited under requirement of this standard separately. So because for us, it's a institution within an institution. However, this exclusion is not for the window. It is for transactions or structures. Which are done by conventional institution without having window. Okay, Dr. Hala, I think the question should be, the the comment should be clear from my side. Uh I hope it will be okay. We have our respected brother Altijani Ahmed. Dr. Altijani Ahmed, is there any difference? What's the difference between principles and rules? Uh now if you are talking about Sharia principles and rules, brother Altijani Ahmed. Uh we use Sharia principles and rules as a combined term. But rules generally is something which is addressing a very specific situation. While principle is the general situation. Where you have to like you know, where you could provide a principle that applies in multiple situations. So principles are the core principles which are there, uh like you know, there should be no reba. This is principle. Prabha is haram. So there should be no reba in the Islamic financial institution. I'm just giving you example. But how this is ensured that there is no reba? There can be individual rules or sub-principles and then some rules that need to be applied. I hope my question, my answer is clear to you. And now if we can have sister, uh now if we can have like uh Dr. Saad has a question, a comment about I S F I two. This is standard comply, yeah, Dr. Saad has a question, does this standard combine or replace standards such as I S F I one and two? Yes, dear brother Saad, uh I thank you for your kind comment. Dr. Saad, uh this standard replaces standard number I S F I one, I S F I two. I S F I three and I S F I five. So in place of four standards, there will be only one standard, this one. Framework of auditing which cover all the requirements of these standards at one place and additional requirements as well. And then standard number four, I S F I four will be replaced by S O F four. Okay? Okay, so now sister sister Nigat may be allowed to question. Do again, Dr. Shaf, okay, first let's allow sister Nigat and then we'll come up to other questions. Sisters, if you can confirm that sister Nigat has been like you know allowed to use the mic and all that? Sister Nigat Tanvir, can you hear me? Sister, you are promoted to as a panelist and you can speak. Okay, she dropped out just now.
Yes.
Okay. Let me just take comment from brother Dr. Shafi again and then if he joins in, we'll allow her to make comment again. The objective supposed to be, the objective of this standard is to provide a comprehensive framework for Sharia auditor for the performance of Sharia audit of financial, non-financial transaction of I F I. Dr. Shafi, my apologies. It means that you are not, we are not on the same page here. Sharia standard is covered, the Sharia audit is covered in I S F I six. This is not for Sharia auditor. This is for the financial statement auditor. The financial statement auditor or what we call the external auditor of an institution, Islamic financial institution. Need to cover the financial audit part as well as has to cover the Sharia aspect part. So Dr. Shafi, my apologies, we are not exactly on the same page. Let me try to explain again. Sharia audit requirement, we have separate. Standard number six and it is covered in governance standard, new governance standard number one. That there should be external Sharia audit for all public interest entities, but that is still not mandatory for other and then not public interest entities. It will still not be mandatory, it will be highly recommended. That is one part. But then you have the normal auditor of Islamic bank like E Y, like K P M G. This is standard covers that they perform their audit as per I S A's and in those countries where A O P standards are adopted, they follow A O P's and I S A's. We are asking that this is the new A O P standard for this one. So if, for example, one of the audit firms. Performs an audit of Islamic financial institution, that one will be following uh. That one will be following the requirements of this standard. So so my apologies that on this objective part, we are not on the same page. Uh Sharia audit covered separately for us and financial audit, including Sharia aspects covered here. We have come in from three, you don't you don't throw, my apologies if I cannot pronounce some of the names properly because you know so many people join from different parts of the world. And at times we are not familiar with the name. So if anybody's name is mispronounced by me, please, my apologies. Uh at times it is also not identified that it's a sister or brother. So again, for my apologies if I do a mistake on that part. The question is elements of audit report point one two eight, page thirty two. Why the report doesn't explicitly require amounts needing Sharia purification? Uh excellent point, this should, this is requirement of the auditing accounting part. So in the accounting standard, we have this requirement. Auditor is giving an opinion on that. Auditor says that the financial statements are providing proper information. So that is why we will not be asking the auditor to give the amount. We will just be asking the auditor to make sure that it is properly done. Purification is done, segregated and it has been appropriately reported in the financial statement, which is already a financial reporting requirement. Of A O P Financial Accounting Standard number one. Second question, it is also doesn't require a disclosure of audit limitations specific to Sharia. In reality, some institutions have vague or undocumented Sharia process or often exposed to a non- non-technical undocumented informal process such as missing documentation for fatwa application of Sharia reviews. I am highly, I am, you know, I have, you know, very high regard for your comment. It's a very, very good comment. But my answer is we address this issue. We address this issue where, let me just identify the clause where we address this issue. We need to come to the client acceptance part, okay, initiation. In the initiation, in we have preconditions for audit engagement and all that. Here we have. Let me just try to find out. Sir, uh sister Marjan, can you remind me where we have that one, the assessment of the score, the the assessment of the. Framework, there is a requirement on the assessment of framework, is it here in or is it in standard number four?
Uh just a second.
Where we have that requirement that if the auditor editor, that you know the Sharia principles and rules cannot be defined properly, the auditor need to. Uh need to reassess whether they can accept it or not. Here in nineteen, we have this one that I on the audit limitation, including the Sharia principles and rules part. This retirement is there in standard number six as well. I'm sorry, it's a very long standard and the other one is also long standard, so I may miss out. The exact place where they they are there. But it's a very good and excellent comment, highly appreciated. Just give me a second to find out the comment because the the response. Just give me a second to find out the comment because the the response.
Uh but then in S O double A four, we have requirement under audit responsibility with regard to the Sharia compliance opinion. And here in paragraph thirteen. Uh we are talking about the audit's responsibility regarding where. You know how the responsibility may increase by the following fact.
No, it no, give me para number for this one, just. Thirteen of SOF four.
Yes, I am not sure if this answers your question, but it does indicate.
No, 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 there is a very specific requirement. Yeah, this thirteen also covers this part, adequacy of Sharia governance framework, no, not career for governance framework. There is requirement about governance framework is later. Found it. No, no, it's still wrong, this is here, yeah, this is here, this is here, let me share it. This is para twenty one and twenty two of S O double A four. Okay, uh now let me take you through this points, although it is in S O double A four, but let me mention it here. The auditor shall develop an understanding of the applicable Sharia principles and rules with appropriate hierarchy of the same in line with the comments of AOF standard and legal and regulatory framework and S P practices and contractual arrangements, including those applicable according to the constitution documents of the institution. The auditor shall also develop understanding of the respective process flows, approved standard documentation and product manuals and SOPs. An auditor shall assess the suitability of applicable Sharia principles and rules regarding that. Now what are the Sharia principle rule? Like for example, if they don't have, if they don't adopt AOF Sharia standards and their Sharia board has not defined all the things properly, I am just giving example. An auditor shall assess the suitability of the applicable Sharia principles and rules regarding the respective institution and shall document the detailed requirements thereof. For the institution's perspective and products where appropriate Sharia principles and rules are not available, the auditor shall interact with the Sharia supervisors. Or SSB of the institution and obtain specific rulings and other relevant guidance accordingly. In cases where the auditor is unable to conclude with regard to the suitability of applicable Sharia principles and rules, this is very important point and this is. Exactly answering the comment raised by the respective participant. Withdrawal from withdraw, uh 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 he, if it is unable to conclude with regard to suitability. It should either withdraw from the engagement altogether if the impact on the truth and fairness opinion is considered persp- pervasive. And disclaim the Sharia audit, Sharia compliance opinion if the impact on the truth and fairness opinion is not considered pervasive. So it's a very important point that has been raised, highly appreciated. And let me just mention that we have covered it for sure. But yes, uh yeah, you you like you know the way we have covered it. Uh. Uh it the way we adjust, why it is hiding, I don't know why it is hiding. I cannot find, okay, these are here, sorry, my apologies. This go, this is here. So your comment was it also doesn't require disclosure of audit limitations specific to Sharia in some some institution have vague or undocumented Sharia processes. So exactly what we are asking here is that you have to assess the suitability of all these things that what whether they are properly done or not. The other para thirteen and fourteen that was referred to by Sister Marjan was related to the Sharia governance part. So there are two parts. One is Sharia, Sharia principles and rules are adequate or not. This is covered in this paragraph twenty two and twenty three. Sharia governance and compliance and other things are covered properly or not. Those were the paras that were covered by Sister Marjan, identified by Sister Marjan. Uh which were like you know, uh which were here, like you know, inability to place reliance on these functions etcetera. So thirteen and fourteen, absence or inadequacy of the Sharia governance framework, which means they are not proper control, there are not proper management function. These were things covered in thirteen and fourteen about implementation part. And the paragraph twenty two and twenty three is about main principles that are adopted as Sharia principles, whether those are appropriate or not. I hope we are able to answer your question, but yes, it was a highly appreciated question. And it is like you know covered already, Alhamdulillah. But this is, this sort of comments are very much valuable for us to make sure that the quality of the standard is up to the mark. Dr. Shafiou, again has a comment, there are some IFI Sharia compliance unit apart from Sharia internal unit. Please can the audit, we assess the work of this unit. We, yes, we we are, we have to place reliance for that purpose, we have to perform an assessment of that one. So uh so the compliance unit and international Sharia audit unit both are to be assessed. But replacing reliance on both is under different approaches. So now we move to the standard number four. And I think I have shared, but I think I need to make it full, fully screen and then share again. So now we are in on the standard number SOF four and we are going to cover this one. Okay, I think you can see the screen, so let's move ahead. So this is standard because we covered most of the things already in S O double A one, so let me try to be a little bit brief on this one as well. So what we are doing right now here is that. We are expanding to the requirements of S O double A one. The core principles are already written there. But since those require that auditor need to give this second opinion. On the supplementary opinion or the Sharia compliance opinion, that is the reason that you need to do some additional work. So this is standard in addition to what is already covered in S O double A one. Covers the additional requirements to be performed by the auditor. S O double A four is uh like you know current SOF four uh or the ISFI four is already there. Which covers these aspects, but this one again improves on that, aligns with the newer standard, aligns with newer ISAs. Uh put some of the requirements in more detail and more comprehensively. And it tries to like you know, make sure that we have a comprehensive reporting framework, auditing, auditing framework. For the purpose of audit of Islamic financial institution covering the Sharia compliance opinion part. So the objective of this standard is to prescribe auditing requirements applicable to this auditor in respect of consideration for Sharia principles and rules in an audit of financial statement of an IFI. Or other institution that operates in compliance and reports in line with Sharia principles and rules. Uh just Marjan, if you can make a note of it, when we finalize standard number one, this IFI part and this part, I think. We might need to align together, like you know what is written SOF four and what is written here need to be aligned together. I think we noted it down earlier, but just to make sure that when we finalize SOF one, we will have to align, this wording is final. So this will be the wording for SOF one also. Uh the coverage part, again, again, alignment means not the the objective, the first part, not the first part, but. Uh the clarification part. Okay, just we can make a note of it internally. The scope is the standard prescribed on auditor's responsibility to consider Sharia principles and rules in audit of financial statement of an IFI or another institution that operates in compliance and reports in line with Sharia principles and rules. Get it out in line, get it out in accordance with the AOF auditing framework. This standard complements the requirements of S O double A one and shall be done in conjunction therewith. It just reminds me that Sister Nikhat wanted to say something and at that time she was dropped out. Sister Nikhat Tanvir, Assalamualaikum, can you hear me? If you want to to make a comment, you you can do it now, you were promoted as a panelist. So you can switch on your video and mic and you can speak.
Assalamualaikum.
Waalaikumsalam.
Thank you so much for giving the opportunity to speak. Uh first of all, I would like to uh appreciate you and your team, the hard work you have done. And most of my questions have been raised by other colleague, so I am very much thankful to others. But one thing I would like to know that the audit firms. If they want to start the work of auditing, should they be only looking after or referring to the framework of auditing? Under this uh standard number one? Or do they have to read it in addition to normal auditing standards as well? Because uh sometimes, just like in case of IFSP or other. It could be the uh total standalone approach or some incremental item. So for what is the guidance for an audit firm? Thank you.
Uh thank you very much, sister. Uh our auditing framework definition in S O double A one, because now I just moved to S O double A four, so I am not opening it again. But like we can, you can go to the definition of framework of auditing. AOF framework of auditing includes SO double As that are issued by AOF plus other announcement like guidance notes etcetera. Read with established practices of auditing. Established practices of auditing in those countries that adopt international standards on auditing will be ISAs. In those countries, they would develop their own in uh own auditing standards, those will be considered the local standards. So we we covered the core principles in S O double A one. We covered the specific requirements related to the Sharia related work that is additionally to be done in S O double A four. And remaining everything we leave to ISAs. This is the approach that the countries where even AOF standards are being followed today on the auditing side, they are following the same thing. So all the ISAs remain applicable unless there is a very specific contradiction with AOF. Again, there is no contradiction technically, only thing is AOF has additional requirement about Sharia compliance in this part. Other than that, all the requirements of ISAs that we refer to as established practice of auditing. And all the requirements of SOF one and four will be applicable or if there is any other new standard that comes in. I hope this question is enough, anything else, sister?
Thank you, I think you have raised, I mean, uh very well regarding the Sharia compliance that is taken care of this second standard. So I believe that my other questions will be answered by you during the discussion.
We hope so, or otherwise you can, you can erase the question again in the end, Insha Allah.
Thank you.
Insha Allah, thank you and thank you very much for the support by SVP, your own personal interest and joining in. We know that uh you know, for such a senior person and also on a weekend, this is like you know. But maybe, maybe for for some senior people, it might be easier to join on weekends.
Uh I think, thank you so much, just one more thing that if, is there any possibility that for some of the audit firms, there should be sort of focus group discussion on this as well?
We have training sessions planned, we have training sessions and workshops planned, Insha Allah, we can do that, Insha Allah, Insha Allah, thank you very much. Okay, now there is comment from brother Molid Abdurrahman Ali, uh uh from Somalia, welcome brother. And my question is about what is the guidance of the order Sharia rules and how it differs from other rules? Uh brother, uh your audit, auditing normal part normally is concerned about the numbers. How the numbers are recorded and reported in the financial statement? Here we are saying that a Sharia conscious user of financial statements is not only concerned about numbers. He is also concerned about whether the the profit is halal, whether the activities are halal. That is the reason that we put this additional requirement on the Sharia rules and principles part. So this makes the key difference here. Uh the second key difference is that at times Islamic finances, transactions and structures and institutions have a different business model. That may not be reflected in the in the in exactly in the conventional standards at time, that is why we have our accounting standards. And our auditing standards also make sure that these things are reflected properly. Thank you very much, brother Molid, and highly appreciate your comment and your presence here. So again, I will not be going in on details, uh like here, here, we have talked about um. Sister Marjan, we have talked about what including virtual institutions here. I think this clarification, including virtual institutions, for example, windows, we can write. And then we can put this clarification in the in the SOF one also. It will partially address the comment, uh comment that we received earlier and then further detail can be provided in the basis of conclusion. I can see my very dear, respected brother, Wail Mirza raising hand, brother Wail, you are allowed to speak, please.
Salaam alaikum to all.
Waalaikumsalam.
Uh so for to everyone and thank you AOF for this chance, just to give us this chance to participate. My question is generally speaking about when it comes to the, you know, to the governance aspect related to the internal auditing. Uh sometimes the uh the outsour.
Internal or external, here your question is about.
No, internal, internal auditing, yeah. Uh sometimes internal uh audit auditing units, uh you know, outsource, outsource some of, you know, their. Uh you know, their, you know, responsibilities to a third party. Uh especially if uh if you know their their level of experience and confidence is low. So they will refer back to the third party, so I am asking about, you know, did this exposure draft. Considering the government aspect related to the outsourcing to the third party. And that will not contradict with their independence concept and regulatory rights.
Uh Dr. Brother Wail, just to clarify my understanding of your question. You are talking about the auditor considering whether the internal audit has outsourced the thing and commenting on that. Or your consider comment is about external auditor like internal auditor considering outsourcing, outsourcing of the function?
No, I am, I am talking about internal audit unit who is outsourcing some of their, you know, responsibility to the.
So your question is not, okay, the first thing is auditor is not required to comment on that one. Internal audit can outsource some of the functions if, if it is in line with like you know the relevant AOF standard. Internal audit is not main scope of AOF. Internal Sharia audit is main scope of AOF. So from that perspective, we are silent on whether internal audit can be outsourced or not. Because we to try not to reinvent the wheel, so internal audit standards. Of institute of internal auditor are generally globally accepted unless the country specific standards are available. So any outsourcing of that one should be governed by those standards and AOF AOF remains silent on that part. AOF doesn't comment on that part. Uh AOF comments on internal Sharia audit. And in some situation, the governance standard on internal Sharia audit, that is governance standard number eleven. Talks about some situations where some of the functions related to internal Sharia audit may be outsourced. Uh brother Wail, is it enough clarification or you need some more aspect to be clarified?
Yes, yes, if the standard or another standard cover the internal Sharia auditing.
Yeah, that is standard number eleven, that is governance is standard number eleven, governance standard number eleven addresses this issue. And allows outsourcing in some situations, not in all situations.
Okay, that's good, thank you, brother.
Pleasure, brother, thank you very much for being with us, highly appreciated and all the support from. Sama is all supported in form of nominating you and other colleagues on the boards and being present in all these activities, thank you very much, brother.
Brother, there are multiple participants, they are raising their hands as an attendees, if I may allow them.
Please allow, please allow. So brother Molid and brother Shafiou, brother, Dr. Shafiou first? Dr. Shafiou, Waalaikumsalam.
Uh uh good morning here in our country Nigeria.
Hello, good afternoon from our side in Bahrain, we just have a Buzoar prayer time now. So so good afternoon from our side. We can hear you, please go ahead.
Uh we really thank you most sincerely for this utmost uh. Uh efforts toward the Islamization of our institutions, more especially business institutions. So sorry, my own is not a a question or is just a request because I will call now for another meeting. Uh please, there is need for a wider, you know, awareness about the standard of AOF. But I know you are doing your utmost best, but there is need to widen it so that more especially into our. High institutions of learning, more especially undergraduate students to become more aware and familiar with all these standards. So I think, I think there is need to have a strategy to cover almost or you can do your homework to know how to catch them young. Through our uh institutions, more especially undergraduate. So that they will come off with all these concepts into the inner chamber of their mind. Please, we thank you. Please, we thank you most sincerely for your efforts, may Allah ride you with general produce.
Amin, amin, thank you, Dr. Shafiu, I think it is an excellent comment, highly, highly appreciate. We we value all your comments and your support. And for this one, uh we we would surely love to work on this part. If you have any comments kindly provide me, my email address is ovan sari at A O F E dot com. Please provide me some comments in writing, how you can feel, we can work particularly in Nigeria, Sub-Saharan Africa, all this region. We are, we are planning a conference, Inshallah, this year if possible with Securities Commission Nigeria. So we'll try to like you know do more activity on that part. But if you have any specific comments and if you want us to be connected to some of the universities in Nigeria and in the region. We will highly appreciate that, thank you very much again for being with us and like you know Allah bless you.
Amin, thank you very much.
Thank you, brother Molid, you have any comment you want to say and and verbally?
Uh salaam alaikum wr wb, waalaikumsalam, and good morning, uh good morning for everyone. I'm from Somalia and I highly thank doctor, I appreciate it for this wonderful uh webinar uh about audit. So uh I applied before uh the program uh certificate that uh that hosted by some bank in Somalia. That member and for the O F E uh institution, so. And I have uh the email about uh from O F E about audit framework. So the briefly program that I applied is as a certified professional financial account standard. So that email I am waiting, so uh so I got the other uh email about audit and Sharia law. So uh I don't know uh the mistake or email or chances.
Thank you very much, brother Molid, this if you can send me by email because right now it's not related to today's topic uh topic. My email address is with you, just drop an email, short email to me, we'll try to resolve this thing, thank you very much for joining us with with us. We thank Sombank also, Sombank is planning to work with us and on 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 developing. Awareness about Islamic finance, about U F E standards in Somalia, including uh working this on these all uh. Uh like you know C P F A S and C P S S programs, Inshallah. So thank you very much, our apologies for any inconvenience, you can just drop me an email and Inshallah we'll try to sort it out. Now with your permission, I'll move back to the discussion today and we have to conclude this one. Uh so let's move ahead to the discussion, so scope part is just to be honest, this will be applicable. Along with S S O A, S O A one, so more or less the scope is same, some wording is improved which we will be addressing. I'm not going for the definition part, if anybody has comments on the definitions, please feel free to provide the comments, otherwise. I'll just skip the definitions and I'll move ahead. Now coming to the main part about the two opinions, we have just re- repeated some of the requirements of S O double A one. And then we move to broad classification part, that that the Sharia principles and rules. Uh that are to be considered by auditor are three types. First type is Sharia principles and rules relevant to accounting and financial reporting requirement. So for example, how the profit and loss is to be calculated, how uh how charity fund has been segregated and accounted for. What is the timing of recognition of asset liability, what is the timing of recognition of revenue, these are the things. That affect the accounting and financial reporting part, so even if like let's take an example. So there is a country where A O F E standards are not followed, auditing standard is not followed. Is still those Sharia principles and rules that are relevant to accounting and financial reporting requirement might still be relevant to the auditor. Particularly if A O F E Sharia standards and A O F E financial accounting standards are followed in that country. Because the accounting and financial reporting need to reflect the true nature of the business transactions. And the true nature and the real contractual obligations and the contractual rights need to be established. So this part is applicable irrespective of any any requirement. Like even if A O F E auditing standard is not there, these are to be covered. There are Sharia principles and rules uh that whose non-compliance may have financial impact. So there are some Sharia principles and rules whose non-compliance may result in reversal of transaction, may result in charity to be paid. May result in some of the financial impacts that can be there. And the third type is where the Sharia principles and rules that may not affect the auditor's fit of truth and fairness opinion. So this is the part where the Sharia principles and rules. Auditor has to, the Sharia compliance opinion will have to consider all the categories. But the but the uh but the uh but the but the truth and fairness opinion. Will be impacted by type one and type two. Now these type one and type two, these are to be worked like you know properly by the auditor. So the auditor with responsibility with regard to truth and fairness opinion irrespective of having the Sharia compliance opinion. This can, there can be certain Sharia principles and rules that may require specific accounting and financial reporting treatment, presentation, disclosure. For in the solution of financial statements, these may include, for example. Certain accounting and financial treatments in the financial reporting treatments in the financial statement, including establishment of contractual rights and obligation of counterparties and hence requiring. Application of an appropriate financial reporting framework, appropriate presentation and disclosure in the financial statement regarding the nature, contractual rights and obligation and other relevant aspects about. Certain account transactions and balances. So that is is still applicable, then there is another part that I mentioned. That there is non-compliance, they may have a financial impact also, although it's not a financial reporting requirement. Now from the those who are attending here from the auditing profession, they know we have a auditing standard on compliance with laws and regulation. So any law and regulation whose compliance may result. In like you know whose non-compliance may result in a financial impact or a constraint on the institution, those are to be considered for audit purposes. So similar to that, any of the non-compliances like that, for example, there is a country that adopted U F E Sharia standard. Now if you have non-compliances of that, even if the financial reporting is not impacted but. The the non-compliance effect, the penal action risk, the constraints on the institution, the reputation risk. Uh like you know the the disclosure part of these non-compliances, all these things might be affected, so these are to be covered by the auditor. Irrespective of whether the auditor feels that like you know that it is having a direct financial impact or not. But if it has a like like any other law and regulation whose non-compliance is. Considered for audit purpose, these are also to be considered. The requirements in this standard regarding the auditor's responsibility for the truth and fairness opinion are designed to assist auditor in identifying any material statement of the financial statement due to non-compliance with Sharia principles and rules. Considering inter alia the factors enumerated in paragraphs eight nine. Accordingly, the auditor is responsible for obtaining reasonable assurance that the financial statements taken as a whole are free from a team statement whether due to fraud or error. In conducting an audit of financial statements, the auditor shall consider the effect of applicable Sharia principles and rules as relevant to respective stages. And process flow of an audit engagement. So these are all the things that you need to do in addition to the E P As regard like similar to what we have the audit considerations for compliance with laws and regulation as I touched upon. Then there is a rebuttable presumption, the auditor's responsibility regarding the work to be performed, work to be performed, enabling it to form Sharia compliance opinion concluding as to whether or not the institution is compliant with Sharia principles and rules. Shall ordinarily not enhance its overall responsibility, hence the work to be performed regarding its primary responsibility. So what we are saying, generally, if you work on the fair, truth and fairness part properly, you should be able to. To conclude on the Sharia compliance part as well. Because some of the Sharia principles and rules have financial effect as we identified. Some of the Sharia principles and rules are similar to compliance with laws and regulations. So what we are saying that if you fulfill your responsibility properly for the financial audit. You should be able to give opinion on the Sharia part as well. However, there are additional aspects, so then this thirteen para thirteen and para fourteen we touched upon very quickly. Uh earlier that presumption stipulated in para twelve may be reverted and auditor's responsibility regarding Sharia compliance opinion may increase and hence appropriate additional work may be necessary. If its assessment of risk related to inability of detection of the institution non-compliance with Sharia principles and rules is increased by virtue. Of any or combination of the following factors, absence or inadequacy of the Sharia governance framework. Weak Sharia compliance risk management function, inadequate internal controls for Sharia compliance. Auditors inability to place reliance on or absence of S S B and S S B report, external Sharia auditor, internal Sharia auditor etcetera. So if you are unable to place reliance on these, if the systems are not there, if the governance process is not there. Then you might need to consider additional work and this paragraph fourteen says that you need to reconsider then the responsibility from the perspective. Here the responsibility for the design part is mainly with the Sharia board except for. Like for example, there is a country like Bahrain that adopt U F E Sharia standards and here they are part of law. Now there is a Sharia board that approves a product which is not in line with Sharia standard clearly, not an interpretation issue. Clear non-compliance of Sharia standard. Now what happens that here according to the hierarchy Sharia law Sharia standards are part of law. So Sharia board cannot go against that. This is the situation that auditor can question, but if there is an interpretation issue. Then the interpretation issue need to be concluded by the Sharia board, not by the Sharia auditor, so Sharia auditor shall not apply. Or the external auditor shall not apply its own judgment with regard to Sharia interpretation. But it it has to consider design part only to the extent of any non-compliance of the respective hierarchy. Other than that, design part is in the domain of Sharia board, so he should not be getting too much into it. The effective implementation part is the is the responsibility, assessment of that is responsibility of the auditor. And the auditor should be able to place reliance on the other implementation functions like internal Sharia audit, Sharia compliance function, external Sharia audit etcetera. Compliance compliance and control functions, if they can replace reliance on that, then they don't need to do too much of extra work. These are like generally inherent limitations part etcetera as well, I'm not going to read them all of it today. And we will be willing to take any comments, so these limitations of the responsibility part are covered. Because we don't want to put too much responsibility on the auditor in a way that it makes the audit difficult, rather we are just clarifying. What is their responsibility according to standards? And what is the limitation of their scope, to what extent they cannot go in further detail? That is what we have talked about here in this section about limitation of the responsibility part. Uh then obviously the management and those charged with governance responsibility, then we have issue about quality management in which we have to ensure that. The engagement uh you that there is a proper like you know capability in the team. So the capability through having the right uh right team and also having capability through involvement of expert where needed. Then in the conduct of an audit with regard to the process flow of audit, there are certain specific aspects where we have touched upon these parts. Uh this paragraph twenty one, twenty two, twenty three, I discussed briefly already in response to the earlier question, so if there is a comment, we'll take it. Otherwise I'll skip on it, interaction with Sharia supervisor or Sharia supervisory board is important, that is going to like you know this is very relevant to ensure. Their interpretation and their views about the issues that are identified. Then identifying and assessing the risk of non-compliance, some of the aspects are to be covered in the with regard to the. Assessment of the the risk of non-compliance and Sharia principles and rules need to be. Uh part of the planning and risk assessments, some of the requirements were covered in S O double A four one. But these are additional requirements in S O double A four with regard to the initial planning risk assessment and. And the uh and the governance and control environment assessment. Uh audit materiality is mainly covered in S O double A one, but here we have touched upon only audit materiality specific aspect, just touched upon, have not gone in detail. Because reasonable detail is there in S O double A one already, uh then above the expert involvement. Here we have talked about the expert involvement, expert involvement as Sharia scholar, expert involvement for the accounting and financial reporting needs. Uh outsourcing is was a comment here that we received that uh that that. I think we haven't talked about this one uh here, but is outsourcing allowed here, I think externally sourced, yes, it is here. May consider using experts who are externally sourced to enable him to fulfill, so outsourcing here is allowed for the for the expert function. Not the team function, only for the expert function. So it is already allowed, so I think we don't need to repeat that part, but maybe we need to clarify it in the base of conclusion that here in this section. The outsourcing option for this part is allowed. Uh then we have reliance on the work performed by S S B, so whatever S S B report is, S S B's work is there that need to be relied upon, including. S S B's annual report, just to keep in mind. S S B's annual report has been significantly improved under the new governance standard on Sharia supervisory board. Uh yes, review and report, there is a there is a there is additional reporting requirements and there is illustrative Sharia board report. Which is much expanded and much better drafted as compared to the earlier report formats that were being used across the globe. So suggestion is to have a look at that, if that report is properly done by Sharia board. I personally believe because my past experience as auditor is also there. That if Sharia board works on that one properly and issues a report, then auditor can put significant reliance on that part. Then we have reliance on the work performed by external Sharia auditor, including the situation where audit firm itself is the auditor, Sharia auditor also. Or where another party is the external Sharia auditor, so we have covered some of the requirements here. Then we have talked about some of the minimum substantive procedures that need to be done. Uh that is like you know very specific requirements that are here. And then uh if there is a non-compliance uh id- is identified uh by other audit uh like you know situation, then how we need to cover it? But Marjan, I think it is other audit procedures. Sister Marjan, can you make a note of it?
Yes.
By other audit procedures, I think there is a typo error, I don't know whether that typo error is here in this presentation or it is there in the. Uh in the standard also, but it has to be attention by other audit procedures, not other audit, okay? Then what are the additional audit procedures when non-compliance is identified or suspected? This is the very specific guidance that is needed for the auditor, that if they have identified or suspect like you know Sharia non-compliance, how they handle it? So this, these are the additional procedures that are to be required here. And then instances of non-compliance Sharia principles and rules, if they don't have a direct effect on the financial statement, how do you handle them? And then about fraud and error, certain specific requirement, particularly the professional skepticism and how you apply it and what is the auditor's responsibility? With regard to the professional skepticism. Uh then we have the requirements about these professional skepticism points are very important, so let me read them very quickly. Because here we say that some of the particular aspects need to be covered. So for example, if there are unjust or illegitimate advantages to or against the counterparties, particularly in case of participatory transaction or structures, for example intentional. Or unintentional misallocation of profits and losses in case of profit loss distribution. Breach of contractual obligations and non-compliance of Sharia principles and rules in respect of establishing rights and obligations of the party. Misuse of funds provided by participatory stakeholders, including violation of contracts etcetera. Concealing or omitting facts whether management respect of certain activities are relevant information to the auditor. Misleading the Sharia supervisory board through concealing certain facts about a matter of significance. Repeated violation or misinterpretation of Sharia principles and rules. Manipulation of documents and records, particularly those pertaining to sequence of Islamic finance transactions, sequence and hierarchy of how you. Go through the transactional process flow of that, these are some of the very important aspects that need to be covered from the professional skepticism perspective. For ensuring fraud and error do not exist. Uh intentional frauds and unintentional errors both can happen and that is where you need to apply the professional skepticism. Then we have some requirements related to written representations, specific written representations. And then we have unique aspects of I F Is ordered due to business model and product structure. This section covers some of the unique requirements, so if you see there is a list of items. And these are very important items, one of a couple of our members said that this is the crux of this standard. General stewardship and fiduciary responsibilities need to be ensured that these are being met properly. With regard to the related parties, equitable treatment of stakeholders etcetera. Uh with regard to the specific fund management and reporting. with regard to the specific fund management and reporting like you know Zaka Fund Charity Fund Koth Fund are these managed properly reported properly presented properly in the financial statement of balance sheet assets under management are properly like you know accounted for and properly reported completeness and relevance of information these are some of the very important aspects that are there for the unique aspects of audit according to business model then we have requirements related to documentation and archiving and conclusion of an audit some of the things are like you know appropriately addressing like you know the missing parts which were there in SOAA one so we are trying to cover those parts in this one then we have auditor's report part there is this this section again auditor's report part we are not repeating but we are simply saying that if there are potential implication or identified or suspected non-compliances how we actually address them in the auditor's report so how it impacts the truth and fairness opinion and how it impacts the Sharia compliance opinion with regard to that how what are the minimum like you know aspects that are to be considered from the reporting perspective and this brings to us to the end of the standard where we the effective date is such supposed to be periods beginning on or after one January twenty seven which means that audits will be conducted normally in twenty twenty eight so this is so it means that only SOAA one the effective date will also be changed accordingly so here I would stop and stop my presentation and we'll see if we have any comments in the Q and A tab I can't see any comment in the Q and A tab and I I'm not sure Sister Marjan if you can confirm if there is any significant comment in the chat window
no brother we just had another one about the compliance of Sharia principles and rules responsibility of auditor and whether how to distinguish between the two roles
okay this is comment by Brother Saad I think that's okay are the compliance of Sharia principles and rules responsibility for auditor or the compliance monitor yes auditor is not ensuring compliance auditor has to check whether there was compliance so you have to monitor it you have to assess it so I will say it is assessment so whose responsibility is to ensure Sharia compliance is those charged with governance that is board and the board and audit committee and the respective committees as well as the management though those are the ones who are responsible for ensuring Sharia compliance auditor is responsible to provide an opinion on the Sharia compliance so this is how you distinguish Dr. Saad so with that I think there is no other comment and I would like to thank you all and hand it over back to Sister Zahra for conclusion sorry Dr. Saad just dropped another question the second question is about how the auditor can rely on external expert to ensure the extent of compliance which Sharia principles and rules Dr. Saad it is an excellent question so Dr. Saad what happens that in the normal audit firms may not have enough expertise available they need to have the minimum expertise so they need to have for example CPA CSE qualified people or otherwise Islamic finance educated people as part of the team but at times it comes that they need to understand what the product is because there are some products which are very very much like you know complicated secondly they cannot they are they are not competent enough at times to make a judgment with regard to compliance with Sharia principles and rules if the management and the Sharia board have already executed a transaction so it is quite possible that they need to involve a senior expert so what is possibility that either the audit firm appoints a Sharia scholar of the equivalent level on a permanent basis or they can appoint somebody on a as an expert on a contractual basis externally sourced for this project only that person should be capable of judging what is the real situation of the structure what is the what is the weakness in the structure what is like you know whether the opinion of the Sharia board that is there is against any of the Sharia board Sharia standards or the country Sharia regulations or the central Sharia board requirements so this is where Dr. Dr. Saad that you need to actually have a high level input this is just like valuation or derivatives or IT where the audit team may not have enough expertise to assess the IT controls or the audit team may not be able to assess the quality of the valuation or the actuarial valuation in case of audit of the insurance company at time auditor need to involve their own actuary to see if the actuarial valuation is done by the actuary that is appointed by the by the management is 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 correct so you need to have a you need to have a expert opinion in within your team to ensure that it is like there and so that you are able to give an opinion on that so so thank you very much everybody and thank you very much Dr. Saad thank you very much Iraqi Association of Accountants and Auditors for supporting us on this thanks to all of you for attending let me now hand it over back to Sister Zahra to conclude for today thank you very much Assalamualaikum
yes with your permission brother Umar I will conclude the session thank you brother Umar Mustafa Ansari the secretary General of AOFI special thanks also goes to the Union of Accountants and Auditors Iraq thank you Dr. Saad for joining us I would like also to thank all attendees for your participation in this important public hearing if you still have any comment question or suggestion please send it to governors@aofi dot com please also check AOFI's website and social media account in order to view the latest update about the upcoming public hearings and events fi amanallah Assalamualaikum Warahmatullahi Wabarakatuh
thank you goodbye Wassalamualaikum Warahmatullahi Wabarakatuh I one minutes please
yes Dr. Saad please
sure Dr. Saad please
yes yes I would like to thank you for organization this meeting all the women and men Dr. Sid Zahra Sid Tamara I would like also to extend my sincere word of thanks to Dr. Umar Al Ansari for this wonderful presentation of the two standards and comprehensive explanation of their contents I I am very very thank you Dr. Umar Al Ansari we look forward to holding similar meeting in the future thank you so much and goodbye
Insha Allah Insha Allah Assalamualaikum
thank you
Assalamualaikum Salam